Well, on our social platforms. Kaitlyn, it's been a few weeks since we've had a chance to connect, but I'm telling you, things have have built up. Not only for connecting with you in regards to a lot of information that we've got to get to, but also tonight's agenda for the city council meeting. You have a lot going on for for tonight's agenda, right?
We do, and we did our last meeting as well. It's the end of the year and it tends to be like this when the when the fiscal year is coming to an end.
Yes, and and try to get as much done in. There are some very important elements and points on tonight's agenda, so we'll get to that. In the meantime, let's before we even get to the city council meeting agenda, let's get to Caitlyn's observations this year as fall, and now we're closing in on winter. Any sort of fun activities that you've had to had a chance to observe or interact with, connect with, what's any community events that you want to share this morning?
Um, there's a few that are um, that are coming up. I mean, I I don't mean to. I don't mean to bring this up because it's your event, but we've been watching the the festival of the lights be put together. We we don't live too far from there and my son and I drive by it every day and we're we love watching that grow and we're anxiously waiting for that to open. It's not necessarily in the city limits, but we're very excited for that to open up on Wednesday. In the in the downtown, we're very excited excited for the tree lighting and for the parade. And, you know, we're just really excited for the holiday festivities and and for the ball drop coming up quickly.
Yeah, a lot of things happening and there, you know, I saw that the the voting is either underway or maybe has wrapped up, but the the US today for, you know, the best ball drop in the in the country. That has to be, you know, if voted again for that, that has to be pretty rewarding. And and we know that it's, you know, based on encouraging those to vote. But you know what? That's that embraces the element of community pride, doesn't it?
It it really does, and that's what it all boils down to. And I know here in Luddington, we have significant community pride and and that is a testament to, you know, to our community and the folks here that that really care about it and and embrace who we are.
Yeah, absolutely. And looking forward to chatting with you about that. As we get closer, we are in Thanksgiving week. At the turkey trot that's that's coming up as well this week, we'll chat on this on the later half of of our segment today, but let's sort of dive into what's happening with city council with. We've got some closed meetings, we've got some. Is it a retraction? What's the what's the actual term? When it comes to foster school that that we're going to be, we're going to be diving in and talking about today?
The agenda item for the foster school is a revocation of the of the Oprah, which was a tax incentive for the property of the foster school that was granted back in two thousand and twenty-three. And city council is consider is considering revoking that Oprah tax incentive later this evening.
And and, you know, let's dive right into that, if that's okay, because that that obviously isn't a hot topic. When the school sold. I think it was, I can't remember the number, but I it comes to mind about the forty thousand range or something like some sort of lowball number there. And, you know, I don't want to necessarily bring a rehash that. But for those that live around the school and the community members to say, okay, this is going to be developed. It's, you know, there is different, different ideas behind it. You know, for housing, I think was was where most of it was leaning towards. And for all those people that live around Foster Elementary there, it is, nothing has happened. And people can say, well, it was because of, you know, the COVID and the lumber and the construction prices and everything like that, but how long does that excuse go?
I mean, the Oprah is, the Oprah was granted under very specific guidelines. And the the purchaser of the property had two years. Two years to complete the rehabilitation of the property. And and it's been two complete years. And the rehabilitation hasn't even started.
Yeah, so and but what do you hear in in, you know, obviously, we don't want to create drama in this sense, but what do you hear from those that purchased the property? Why that hasn't gone forward, you know? And obviously, you know, every business's circumstances are different, but but why?
Um, I think I think that i- in terms of, you know, state and federal funding for large projects like that. They purchased the property in a strange time. A lot of the COVID, a lot of the COVID funding dried up or was starting to dry up. And the state and federal dollars, the way they were structured, they started to adapt and change. How how they could be used or the the monies were switching hands, who was managing them? And the criteria for how the funds could be spent or the way they were being dispersed. So I just think that the dynamics of that funding made it made it a bigger beast to handle. That is, that is my own opinion, right? That's that's not anything that that they're saying or anything like that. But I think that's a that's a big piece. And then and then for the city, another piece for us is just that it has been a code enforcement issue. There has been just, you know, broken windows, the the grass has not been mowed. It's just really becoming kind of a blight issue. The property has not been maintained very well. And we've just, you know, we've we've got to move forward.
And let me ask this question again. And again, if you can't obviously, we're not looking for, you know, exact, you know, perfect conversations of when you are talking to to the the owners there. But what are they giving you so that you can pass that on to the community? I would assume, you know, somebody that lives right across the street or down the street or around the corner of it is looking at that and wondering, okay, what is going on? What's that message then that you are relaying to those residents?
In regard to
Why they haven't kept up with it?
Um, I I think it's difficult for any property owner to maintain a property when they don't live here.
Okay, yeah, true.
Right, so they're trying to maintain a property from a couple hundred miles away.
Okay.
And and so we're just, we're at a point now where we we need some sort of property management, and this still doesn't necessarily fix that, right? This is just rescinding the the tax incentive that has been granted to the property. I I believe that they're hoping to sell the property to to another interested party. And and the city really wants to see that parcel developed for housing purposes. So, you know, so we're hoping that something positive comes out of this. We've been, we've been working with the property owner since the since the spring. Christie Zimmerman from The Right Place over at the Chamber has also actively been working with us and the even even the county has semi been involved in some conversations trying to ignite some sort of housing development, right, with with that parcel and and getting some sort of movement, because it really is a key piece to to the housing issue here in in the city of Luddington and in Mason County. It's it's a large parcel, it can it can meet a significant need, and we would, we would really like to see to see something hap- something positive happen there. So we're gonna, we're gonna do our part, and and that starts with provoking the Oprah.
Okay, and that that's on tap for tonight, and that's where that tax incentive and that that puts pressure on the owners there to flip it if they're going to flip it, it sounds like. But I'll ask you two two difficult questions, if you don't mind, and I usually I'm I'm not too too hard on on questions that that put you on the spot, but if you don't mind. The first question is, was there any expectations that you know of? That this that the owner of the property was going to develop it, or was it just that they were purchasing it to flip it eventually?
I believe that the owner had every intention to develop this property.
Okay.
They they did receive, I believe it was a a My Neighborhood or a Mishta grant, they did receive a large a large grant from the state at one point to to create housing on that parcel. The the, I I believe what happened with that grant is the, like I was indicating earlier, the funding structure changed. And instead of the funding being on the front end of construction, the funding became reimbursable on the back end. And that was and that was problematic for them.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So and and the second question that I have is does the city then, like, how much can you put your your finger on this this cell of this property again? Meaning you are in a point where it's not being kept up? The current buyer or the current owner is going to try to sell it? How involved is the city if this happens again?
In terms of code enforcement?
Of
Or
Expectations of the of a new owner for that property? I mean, how much can you be involved? Because, you know, that's, you know, it's to them selling it to somebody else. But again, it's it's something where you're dealing with issues of the code enforcement and and upkeep and such. Can you put expectations on that cell from a city standpoint?
I mean, it's it's a private market, right? Property owners have property rights. And and we can, we're here as a tool and a resource, and we can help establish communication lines and help them find partner agencies and and funding and and those sorts of things if if they want that relationship. We also don't have to be part of those conversations at all. And that's it it can be, we can help make the the process quicker. And unfortunately, sometimes those parcels sit undeveloped for a while. Obviously, we would really love to find a developer whose interests align with ours. But we don't own the property, so we don't have any control over that. And we've tried to to make our interests in the city's interests clear to the current owner. But that doesn't, that we don't have any vested rights. We don't own the property. So unfortunately, all we can do is have conversations like these. We have, we do have the, we do have control over the tax incentives and things like that. We have control through this over zoning, over brownfield incentives. But at the end of the day, the the per- the individual who owns the property does control really the timeline and those sorts of things.
Okay, well, we'll see what comes from the city council meeting tonight, and, you know, it sounds like, you know, that will put if if it is where the those are are you allow those to expire or retract those that 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 will put a little bit more pressure on some action, I guess, for that for that owner, and we'll follow up with you on that.
And and I do want to say, I do want to, I do want to say one thing, Chris. I I believe that the the property was purchased for twenty thousand or somewhere in there. It's it's not as simple as just going to the owner and saying, well, we'll buy it from you for twenty thousand dollars instead. I I know I've heard that many times. They have their their own costs over the last few years. They've done environmental inspections and investigations. They have architectural costs. They've paid, you know, taxes and things like that over the last years. And at the end of the day, they are private property owners, and they have the right to sell to whomever they want to sell to.
Yeah.
Just like all of us as property owners can choose who we sell our homes, our businesses to, right? We don't have to sell to the lowest bidder, the highest bidder. We can choose to sell to our brother or to the person most far removed from our personal business, right? We have that, we have that option. So you know, and unfortunately, we could, the city or any of our partners could make the the highest or best bid and the private party could choose whether or not to accept that.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and that's where the other parts come into play, the the code violations, there's fees and costs involved in that and and everything else that that, you know, either they continue to rack up those and leave it as is and and, you know, make it a blemish or a new buyer comes in and and says, hey, you know, you're not keeping up with it. You've got pressure from the city. I'll buy it for for this amount. Well, we'll see what what happens from it. We are talking with Caitlin Aldrich, city manager of Luddington this morning. And you've got city council meeting tonight, six PM. You have a very busy agenda. You're going to go into closed session tonight to talk about the Reamer situation with Andy's there. What can you update us on if you if you have a moment here? What's what's going on with that property as well?
We have the the closed session tonight, like you said, it's right at the beginning of the the agenda. It is before even the first public comment. And and that is, I'm just going to say, it's our attorney is only available for the first forty-five minutes of the meeting. So we're just going, you know, right into that closed session to get that done and over with before we proceed with the rest of the meeting. For those that are maybe just catching up on the subject, ASR Real Estate filed the lawsuit back in October. We had a court hearing scheduled for November that has been rescheduled a few times. Judge Snegowski had to recuse herself from the hearing or from the case due to a conflict of interest. It has been reassigned to Judge Fox. And so far, the hearing has just continued to be rescheduled because the private, the two parties, the city of Luddington and ASR Real Estate, are kind of working through the issue on their own. And so we are going into closed session tonight to discuss kind of where we are at. And are we kind of close to an agreement possibly outside of, like a settlement outside of court?
Okay. And and again, we can't go too much into it, but settlement could be defined as allowing them to continue to work, revamping the construct or the the plans, meeting in the middle somewhere. What what can you tell us in regards to any of that?
Just that. Settlement means anything is on the table.
Yeah, absolutely. What is obviously, you have answered this question, though, from your attorneys and from their attorneys and such, but what is your, what is your immediate hope in in regards to this? Do you still, you know, last time we talked about, we talked we were talking about, okay, hoping that it, well, I'm not hoping, but allowing it to go to to trial there so that, you know, that it can clarify or clear things up or you know, kind of break through some of the confusion or the cloud out there and the where are you at now? It sounds like, obviously, you know, some sort of settlement, of course, or some, but what what is the end result at this point?
I mean, the end result at this point is still for the site to come into compliance with the site plan and for Andy Reamer to open his business.
Okay, fair. And for the city not to have any expenses, right? I mean, there was part of that lawsuit was, I believe, twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that correct? That if the judgment is put through, that that could hurt the city slightly as well?
There's, there is a number of expenses that are listed in there, yes.
Okay. Well, this probably won't be settled in two thousand and twenty-five.
I wouldn't. I would not take that off the table, no.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, we look forward to it. And again, you know, when it goes into litigation like this, then obviously, you know, you can't say a lot, but but we're saying what you can. As an asterisk asterisk of that, though, is there anything that you can clarify that is still rumor mill out there that would just make sense from your standpoint? I mean, you we, you've done a lot of clarification with us in the past, but is there anything that would help with the community to understand a little bit more or anything recent that was needing to be clarified, maybe a little bit more?
Honestly, Chris, I don't know. There's so, there's so many rumors out there. I I don't think I, I really don't think I have any. You know, other than other than the just like, just like Dr. Reamer has property rights that he is trying to protect. The the city has public property that in in infrastructure that we are also trying to protect.
Okay, well, and and it shows where you stand on things, and I think that's important for the community to understand. Instead of, hey, you know, we we're going to adjust for this person or that person or this organization, no matter where they are in the in the totem pole of life. If you are just joining us, we're talking with Caitlin Aldrich, city manager of Luddington. You have additional events or additional action items on tonight's agenda. I instead of me picking and choosing, since we have limited time, what is two or three things that you want to make sure that the community understands is coming up tonight on the agenda?
In terms of events?
In terms of action items, or I know we we've got the mayor that is going to probably take majority of the meeting with all of the items that he has there from the Turkey Trot and the Run Luddington approvals for next year, but in regards to anything in the in the public side of of the meeting or the the subcommittee side of the meeting?
Tonight, we will be holding the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-six budget. Are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here. You froze for a second, but you're back there, yeah.
My apologies, I'm I'm using my cellphone and I have to keep clicking the screen to to keep it up, so it went dark for a moment. The two thousand and twenty-six budget is is a big, is a very big item. The two thousand and twenty-six budget is proposing the use of just over two hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. Our last several budgets has used fund balance. Essentially, what that means is that our our revenues are not keeping up with expenses. So our our expenses every year are higher than our revenues, right? Our ballot, our budget is out of balance. And every year, if you're not accustomed to governmental accounting, we're using our savings account basically every year to to balance the budget. Well, our savings account is only so big. And and next year, we're going to be using that savings account again. In two thousand and twenty-seven and two thousand and twenty-eight, we're going to be using a half a million dollars each just to operate. So we're not in a very, we're not our financial projections are not good. And we have, so I'm saying this because I want folks to pay attention. The city has a lot of work to do. We have a number of difficult decisions to make. We are already looking, we have been looking at them. We are going to be taking a deeper dive, the finance committee, myself, staff. We are working through those every week, every day. And at two thousand and twenty-six, we will be proposing ways to save money, ways to raise revenue. And I'm saying that here because I've been saying it on any platform that I have. Because we just, we have a number of difficult decisions that we're going to have to make because the two thousand and twenty-seven and two thousand and twenty-eight projections are not sustainable. Quite frankly, what we've been doing for the last several years is not sustainable. We are just at a point where we have to make permanent corrections. You know, because we have to, we have to be, we have to go on a different trajectory at this point.
Yeah, but people are going to start asking, if they're not already asking, you know, what could be on the chopping block? Like, like, when you look at budgets from from the city of Luddington in particular, is there a lot of fringe stuff, I guess I would describe it as, as you know, things that, oh, we're doing this because we we'd love to be able to do it, and it's great for the city, but ultimately, it it needs to go away?
It depends on your definition, right? We don't there are things that we do that are amenities, that are things that we don't have to provide according to estate statute. Or and those are things like leaf pickup.
Okay, okay.
For residents. It makes our community a lot cleaner. It it is, it's a really nice service. It costs us almost two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Wow, yeah. And when you start laying out numbers like that, you hope that the community will understand, because the answer can't be just, hey, we're gonna do a tax increase to to, you know, replace this, because people get obviously tired of that. Some understand, but a lot get tired of that. And so they accountability from their government.
Correct. So I'm, I just gave leaf service as an example. I'm not saying that we're going to get rid of leaf pickup. You know, like, that's, it's just an example. I don't think people, I don't think folks realize that that curb side pickup a few times a year costs that much money. And why does it cost that much money? The equipment, the folks that manage it, the the permitting to allow those leaves to decompose. Like, it it adds up significantly over over time. And there's just, there's a number of things that we do that we don't have to do that just, it costs a lot of money.
And you don't want people to go out and be like, oh, my gosh, they're stopping the leaf pickup, you know, that that's that's premature, you know, you're going to do over the next, what, six months, year? Try to figure that path forward in regards to that and get community input and, you know, the whole process that goes along with it. But but sometimes there's nothing wrong with taking the, you know, taking a scalpel to to the budget, because there's some expectations from the citizen standpoint that you know, the the city can balance a budget and and be able to to go forward there. We'll dive into that in the future. I think it'd be good to do that. What do you, because I know you have to to go, but what do you want in regards to this budget for people to understand about the current budget? What's, just so that the, again, the rumors and the conversations and the misconceptions don't continue to fly and you can try to clear up some things? don't continue to fly and you can try to clear up some things?
Um, that when, when in in 2026, when we start to ask for public participation, that that folks participate. That when, when we look for feedback, um, and 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 we and we start having those conversations or we, we're doing fee studies and and we're reevaluating, um, the way that we, that we do things. Um, just underst- understanding that these are, these are the reasons why we're having these discussions. Um, we can't, um, we would like to have targeted, um, discussions with folks about the services that we provide. Um, and we can't do that unless folks engage with us. Um, so we're, we're, uh, 2026 is going to be a lot of learning, a lot of engaging, um, a lot of difficult conversation. Um, and it, it will be much more productive and we will be successful. Um, if we have partnership, um, and open communication with with the public. So, um, I think that, again, I I know that it's a bleak outlook for 2027 and 2028, but right now it's an outlook and we have to, we have to use 2026 to correct what 2027 and 2028 are actually going to look like.
Well, it's good that you are seeing that now, um, and focusing it on now. And so I think that's, that's, that's gonna be crucial. And we'll, uh, pick up that conversation, uh, in the future and hopefully kind of walk with you through that, um, so that we can be a conduit to to, um, to share that information with the public and and be able to continue our conversations that we have, uh, going forward. All right.
And I want, and I want the public to know too, that our staff, our department heads, our supervisors are excited to have these conversations. They're eager to address this problem. They have ideas, they have solutions, they're waiting to be heard. Um, they don't, internally, we don't look at this challenge, um, like this mountain that we cannot climb, right? We, we, we look at this and we're looking at it strategically. Um, and we're, we're ready, we're ready to take it on. Um, and I don't want the, I don't want the community to think, you know, how are we gonna overcome this? We're, we're ready to, we're ready to face it head on.
Well, and you've been in city government for quite a few years, uh, in northern Michigan, in west Michigan, in the Luddington area now. Uh, a half a million, uh, deficit like that, is it? Can you, can you wipe it all away? Can you wipe a portion of it away? What's realistic?
You could, you could wipe it all away. You just have to, you just have to attack it from multiple angles. And that's why we're looking on the expense and revenue side. Um, you know, and and you have to, you have to look at it, um, holistically.
Okay, all right. Well, we're, we're looking forward to, to seeing what you discover and 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 how you do that and, uh, um, and 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 being involved and sharing that information as we go. Uh, I, and I, I don't wanna leave you hanging, but, uh, um, last, uh, question, anything that we've missed talking about that you want to make sure that the community knows about either tonight or as we get closer? And we'll have a, a wrap up of 2025, you know, later on in our conversations. But anything that's pressing that you want to make sure that you get out to the community now that you have this, uh, audience here?
Um, I don't think so, other than please donate a pie or buy a pie.
Yeah, that's right. And, uh, and good point there. If you missed that segment, uh, we had Captain Habman and and Officer Gallahue on earlier this morning. And the pie auction's a pretty big deal, so. And, uh, and I'm gonna put you on the spot. You know, I was gonna ask if you brought it up. Uh, anything that, uh, you're gonna be donating? Are you gonna, gonna be, uh, making anything? Or, uh, sometimes, I will say this, sometimes people will buy them and donate them. And that's okay because somebody at Meyer or Walmart or somewhere else baked it. Uh, but, uh, what's, what's, uh, what's the pressure that's on your shoulders in regards to this?
So I will be cheating this year and will be buying a pie. Um, my husband still works in Traverse City. Um, so he will be buying a pie from the pie company. And that will be our contribution this year.
That's okay. It it happens. And, uh, and you know what? Uh, it's, it's probably, at least for me, it's better than what I would make. Uh, it could be a disaster, but all right.
Our last city council meeting was like four and a half hours and in order for it to be fresh, I was not going to try to time trying to bake something, uh, with another lengthy agenda before this pie auction. So I figured it would probably be the best.
Hopefully, tonight will not be as long, but I know it's gonna be a packed, uh, the city council meeting. And I think the last thing, a very last thing to make sure that that people know is that, uh, just, we, we, we highlighted it, but just for their understanding is that at 6:00 PM, you know, it, the mayor will open the meeting and you'll go through the formalities there. But then right into a closed session. Um, so if people are coming out, they might walk into the chamber there and like, hey, kind of, or or into the hallway, where is everybody or what's going on? So, uh, that, that's just, uh, you know, uh, something from an expectation standpoint tonight, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
We appreciate you. Yeah, absolutely. We appreciate you taking the time. We will connect with you in a couple of weeks. And, uh, and looking forward to, uh, an exciting week with the Turkey Trot, the Pie Auction, uh, and so much, uh, so much more. So Caitlin, thanks for for being a part of the conversation today.
Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and go Lions.
There you go. Great message. It's Mom FM and Hot Country Hit.